February, we join you for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. We will begin with public comments. Don't everyone run sharp at the same time? Okay, we're moving out from public comments. Um, agenda review. Um, I'm going to skip M B C. For now, for until the next meeting. I think that's the only. One thing, do we have? Do we not have public? No, okay. None on public, alright. Review of correspondence. Good to have you. Alright. Mr. Holdridge, if you want to join us to review warrant articles.
Good evening, everyone. And uh, happy birthday to somebody here.
Oh, thank you.
Big day, that's why I'm here, actually. We'll have to kick them out. Alright, so um, good evening, everyone. Um, want to just go over the uh, the warrant articles that will be discussed on February eighth for the school district as we, as we do every year. And essentially just to find out um, which board member will be presenting the ones? And if there's any questions or concerns on any of the warrant articles that we should know in advance? And um, these look pretty well, well cut and dry here, so they're um, uh, the first one here is essentially the school budget. Um, now with the M B C be presenting that, will Terry, Terry Roy be presenting? And then you folks take the lead, or?
I don't know.
That's typically how it, that's what happens.
If he's, if he's at the meeting, then yes.
And then, then um, Maureen Quinn would be his alternate.
Yes.
So, so typically I would have the M B C person uh, present the budget? And then um, and then you folks, uh, who would want to present it on behalf of the school? Okay, great.
Unless someone else would love to volunteer. I'm happy.
There, um.
Hey, what did you say? Sorry. Oh, Nate loves you?
Uh, favorite. Yep. That's how that works. Your absent, your chosen. Um, okay, the next one um, is the High School Fuition Expendable Trust Fund. So uh, presenting board member for the, for that?
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, um. The third one is uh, oh, let me get your spelling, your name?
Oh, Ellen O'Donnell.
Is it?
O, apostrophe D O, N N.
With an E, E L L, E N?
Two Ns, two Ls. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, great. And then number three is the um, uh, raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand to be placed in the school equipment and installation expendable trust fund. So presenting board member.
This year, you interested in presenting?
Um, you don't have to, no pressure.
It's supposed to work that day, I don't know how this. Oh, I'm not sure how long I'm supposed to, because that's a mandatory day at work, but I might be able to, I don't know.
Okay.
But I don't, if I can't, I don't know if I should.
Yeah, that's fine, you don't have to.
Sign up to speak.
Yeah, you can be there, you can be there also, so.
I hope to be. I just don't know if I should, you know, say that I won't do this if I'm not able.
I am gonna sign Nate up for this one.
Okay.
I was gonna vote, but.
I'm sure Nate's all on board.
This will be the, the easiest one he's ever given.
Yeah, he's done some complex ones. I would agree with that. Um, okay, great. Um, the fourth one is to uh, voting to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred fifty thousand to be placed in the school building repair trust fund, so.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay, and then the last two are petitioned warrant articles. So um, uh, those are, are advisory only in, in, as they're written, as I'm, as I understand. The petitioners, if um, if I get their names and phone numbers, I, I'm happy to call them and discuss with these, with them personally. Um, prior to the deliberative session, just in case they have any questions on those. But um, as our, as our school district attorney has advised, those are both advisory only uh, with those two, so.
I don't know if I have the phone number.
I think you're just talking about the petitioner that submitted it.
Right, yep.
And I think, I think I know who it is, but I'll check with you. Did Stacy do both of those?
I know she did one of them, I'm not sure, I didn't check with her.
I think she did five.
So, right.
Okay, yeah, if we just double check and then I just typically reach out to them and say, hey, um, just a heads up, appreciate you doing that?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions on the process? And then, um, and then uh.
And then um, number six, just, do you mind if I just speak to them?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Um, number six, I did um, follow up with our attorney, because my understanding was all five school districts needed to have it on the ballot at the same time for the same year. Um, and he said that that would be correct. So, the petition date has passed and there are other districts that don't have it. So even if it passes Deerfield, it won't go into effect, because all five towns have to pass it on the same year. So there's a couple that have passed it in prior years, but that, it has to all be done at the same year, do it into effect the following year.
And if we can get the RSA for that of?
I have it.
Yeah, oh, perfect, okay, great, so, so just so we uh.
It's um, one ninety-four, C, colon, nine dash A.
Okay, great. Just one, just, I'm pretty sure she'll ask for it, if you could say, if you could. Perfect, um, you had said there might be one more warrant article, is it, or are we?
Oh, it was, I think we were gonna talk about that, um, on the, on the budget article, but.
Oh, um, the change?
Yeah, the change, the M B C had suggested that we add the tax impact of the default, since the tax impact of the rush, is there, does the town impact that they say that?
Yes, the town's that is to the tax impact for the default. And so they wondered if we would want to put the tax impact for the default.
So typically, we, we just have.
It's not, it's not there, it's here.
There's two options that I, I put in the drive.
Oh.
Option one and option two. So if you decide to include it, you just need to make that motion and I have both versions, so whichever one you decide, you can sign tonight.
So I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize, I saw them both in there, but I only copied this one, because they.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, the other one we approved, so it's just, it's that without the second.
Correct, yeah.
Um, so we just have to decide if we want to have the estimated tax impact for the default as well.
You said the town does it?
Yes. Should be consistent with the town. Yeah. I have an opinion. Anyone have other thoughts?
I feel like I had other thoughts when I was at the M B C meeting, and I don't remember. I mean, it does show that they're very close.
Yeah.
Right, so, I think it's important that it should. I'm fine with it.
More information to the community, the better, in my opinion, but it's up to you, obviously, but um.
And I sent you both versions, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I had.
I have the one that's.
I had the, yeah, this was the later one, I think, version. I, I printed out the last one, so, and it has it on it.
Okay, great.
So, um, okay, great. So, any other questions on warrant articles? Pretty cut and dry, um, good stuff. Um, so the morning oath, um, we're gonna be having in the cafeteria, correct?
Yes.
I don't, I don't see a need for cracking out the gym, like we had in the past.
DPR has basketball in the morning.
Perfect, so yeah, so we'll try to do it, do it there. Um, the sound folks need to come in at seven AM, if that's possible.
Okay.
Set up, okay, great. And other than that, is there anything else I can do to help you?
Not mine.
Yep.
Um, I don't think so, I've been working for it. Do people have any questions, or?
So Eric Gross won't be there, but Dwight Barnes is gonna fill in for him, so he'll be my assistant moderator. So, that day, and um, other than that, I don't expect it to take too much of your time today, so.
It'll probably be slightly longer than the one in August.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But not as long as some of them have been.
Yeah, no, they're typically, they go a couple hours at the most, um, for this sort of thing. You're not trying to do a school or something, extra school, so it's, I think it'll be a little bit.
Yes.
Okay, um, well, if you think of anything in the meantime, don't hesitate, I'm happy to help and um, but I think this is, this is a great start and I think we'll be in good shape for February eighth.
Awesome. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Concord High School twenty-three, twenty-four report, if you'd like to join us. Thank you for coming.
For those of you who haven't met Tim, Tim is the principal of Concord High School. We're here to share some information about our students.
So I, I believe, you know, I'll have this packet, so I'm not gonna read it verbatim. But I, I, you know, singled out key highlights within certain areas of it. Um, first, you know, to just reiterate, the students of Deerfield, when they come to Concord High School, for all intensive purposes, they are a Concord High School student, Concord High School community member. And they really acclimate, integrate, and, and shine in our learning environments. Some of the key things that highlight right out of the gate, uh, last year, we had a, a successful graduation, three hundred seventeen students graduating. About ten percent of that was uh, Deerfield students. Um, that was through our Concord High School pathway, general diploma. Um, and then in addition to that, we had five other additional Deerfield students who completed their graduation requirements through our Concord School District Diploma. A pathway that helps students who may have struggled a couple of years with the traditional academic setting, who may be ready for the workforce early, and they want to graduate, you know, uh, on time when they have some credit, credit deficits. It awards credits for some authentic learning opportunities, work-based experiences that are tied into a postgraduate plan that students create during their time in our Concord School, School District Diploma programs. That are also integrated, blend of both our regular classes at Concord High School, as well as what we call our, our diploma, adult diploma program in the evening, which has more of that uh, uh, community education, workforce-focused, uh, based uh, flavor to it, so to speak. So, we, in addition to the twenty-nine Concord High School graduates, we had five Concord School District graduates, as well as two students complete their high school equivalency through our HSET program. So, last year was about thirty-seven, uh, thirty, thirty-six students altogether from Deerfield completed their high school uh, diploma or an equivalency through uh, you know, our different pathways to getting there. And I think that's something that we emphasize throughout our academic programs, is that uh, there is a path to getting to where you wanna go and helping you to achieve your goal. We have the resources that we really try and surround the students to help them, you know, get to where they're headed. Um, moving on from our graduation piece, is the experience at Concord High School, uh, we, going into uh, that post-secondary focus, we have what we've rolled out this past year, and there's a link into the electronic copy of this, our program of studies. We call them C H S pathways. We try to focus our program of studies around sixteen career clusters that are driven by New Hampshire and New England Economic, Department of Economic and Labor Development, focusing on areas of uh, where um, the job mar, jobs are, the markets are, the careers are for the graduates. And we focus our program of studies classes and align them to sixteen career pathways, as well as attach them to what we call extended learning opportunities. So it's work-based learning experiences, community-based experiences, where students can have real world, real-world application skills in learning in our classes, receive credit for it, community service credit for it, uh, micro credentials for it, and it goes on their transcript as part of their high school story. Before I move on from that, that's just kind of that overarching experience at Concord High School. Any questions on that? Alright, um, some, getting some of the nuts and bolts, uh, Concord High School just went through a new asking accreditation cycle. We, we were, we, uh, we received accreditation, we'll have a decent, you'll visit this December. Um, there, we had uh, some recommendations, uh, most of our recommendations were things that were already in process. Um, we will share that out in December with both boards, we'll get a copy of it to Patty, so you have that to uh, to uh, see, view, and review our action plan and school improvement plan towards those. Moving on, uh, and our students experience at Concord High School, like any other school, we have challenges. Students have difficulties, whether it's engaging their academics, behaviors, or attendance. And we, we really dig into what that's about. We don't just assume you haven't met the qualifications of attendance for a class, therefore you don't receive credit. We don't assume that your behavior is because you don't like me, we assume there's another reason to it. And we have, in the last three years, really ramped up our uh, training, staff, knowledge of restorative practices, as well as our multi-tiered systems of support for students. And we take an approach with every behavioral incident, every attendance incident, to engage students, um, their families, and discussing what is the need that we're missing. And we have a very advanced, I would say, we're probably one of the leaders in the state, systems of support from substance abuse, um, counseling, from um, uh, counseling and uh, what, it's a program called Renew, where they really work with students around um, diverse childhood experiences, and developing coping strategies for the anxiety that they have as a result of those, and help them engage. And we have, in addition to those social, emotional, and mental health supports, uh, uh, we, we do have counselors from our community uh, programs. Riverbend um, has two therapists that are present at site that can be accessed by our students. If, go, as we go through our, our systems of support and restorative lens, we find that as a need for a student, it could be something they have access to at our school, and speeds up processes for families to access those community services if needed. That has substantially decreased, something that's gone in here, our, our out-of-school suspension, in-school suspension, and time out of the classroom for students related to behavioral attendance and uh, what we call social-emotional needs. So that has been a, a big success of ours. Um, we're uh, putting data together at the end of this year, because this is really the year we hit the ground running with our programs, to be able to compare it over longitudinal, year one, year two, year three, and that is something else we'll be sharing out with the uh, two boards of Concord School, this, uh, Concord High School. Um, something, I'll move on from that.
Can I ask a question about?
Yeah, go right ahead.
I was just curious, is this something that you guys developed yourself, or did you get that from somewhere else?
Um, so, we, we did not develop it ourselves. Uh, multi-tiered systems of support have been around for ages. Uh, for a while, it was called response intervention, or positive behavior intervention systems. Um, multi-tiered systems of support is kind of the three-point-oh, I guess you would say of that. So it's been something across the nation that's been around for a while. Restorative practices have been adopted in other countries prior to the United States, but I would say two thousand twelve, Massachusetts, Governor DeBaul, DeBaul Patrick, as well as California, Colorado, and there's uh, one other state, uh, it's Minnesota, Montana, made it mandatory. And so around two thousand twelve, that started sweeping the nation. And um, yeah, the New Hampshire Department of Education just hired a consultant for New Hampshire Public and Private Schools around uh, restorative practices and multi-tiered systems of supports, um, that I'm gonna be working closely with over the next, you know, couple of years of our implementation of these systems. So it's not, not um, this is developed by us, but we, we do have in-house experts who retain, who uh, attain uh, trainings, certification through trainings with Suffolk University, and um, and as well as I've had experience through some of my uh, doctorate uh, work, working with uh, experts in the field and implementation of whole schools. So we, we have a restorative practice M T S system nuanced to Concord High School that is driven by our attendance data, our behavioral data, our academic data.
Are there other um, high schools in New Hampshire that?
Pitts, Pittsfield Middle High, um, Exeter Elementarys and Middle Schools have uh, you know, ventured into this. Um, I've heard, I've talked with uh, members of Merrimack School District, they're about to be in their journey into the restorative lens. They have some of the uh, elements of M T S S. Uh, you could look at the Hampstead School District has uh, some more advanced work around the M T S S work.
We, we, this is when we spent a lot of time here, um, also, we went through, she went through the program with the S R grant, so all of our staff are also trained, we went through a year or two years.
Two years?
More than a year.
For the M T S S, was it here, the P L Cs and?
So our staff are all broken up, they're, we're, she's doing the tier, three tiers here, so. Not the restorative practice piece, but the M T S S.
That's more on a personal level, like Mr. Green has gotten some training in that, he's right, you know, we've tried to implement some of those practices. Specifically looking for the why of the potential, yeah.
Uh, uh, they, they blend together uh, a successful model, but a blend of the two. Restorative practices has a great way of developing proactively relationships with students, staff, and student to student. So you, you are able to avoid many of the disruptions to the student's instruction. Um, and it also gives tools and uh, skills to the, the practitioner to really drill down to what the need is. And when you identify the need, then you look at your tiered systems of supports and try and link the student to that, that support, so that they, that need is met, and you don't have a recurrence of the behavior, or attendance uh, concerns, or uh, disengagement, so.
Um, I'm just curious, um, like what is the family dynamic for like the Renew program, for instance? Can you, do families have to consent to that?
Absolutely. Any, anytime we recommend a, and anything beyond a universal support, family, families involved, consulted, brought into the discussion, we, we use the same data where we do in our child. Um, all that happens while in advance of any support being put into place.
Cool, thank you.
Alright. Um, from an academic view, uh, Concord High School, um, unlike every other, just like every other school, has to always be reviewing their curriculum, looking at um, you know, our curriculum maps, our programs we offer, what are the, what are the needs of the statement of the standards, and where do we want to exceed and why? Um, so we have, have spent the last couple of years really investing time into universal design for learning, a really uh, um, best practice to meet the needs of diverse learners in the classroom. We've really amped that up over the last couple of years, and our hopes is next year and the following year, we'll really, uh, we'll begin to see the, the fruit of those labors showing up in our classroom, in our students' grades, uh, their engagement, our attendance to the individual classes, um, and hope that we will make a sizable impact on both academic outcomes, as well as behavioral outcomes there, by engaging them more so in their, their academics. We have professional learning communities that are both disciplinary, interdisciplinary, and multi-grade um, P L Cs that focus on big questions, overarching questions for our students. What is the desired outcome, what's a portrait of a learner that we desire when a student graduates Concord High School? How do we engage them in conversations? And making the curriculum that they're learning and experiencing relevant to their post-secondary goals? And um, over time, we hope to develop, you know, a portfolio system that they will have when they leave Concord High School, that it, it illustrate exemplars of their learning over time. So, um, that work is, both our curriculum review, and that work is happening right now through P L Cs at Congress. Um, again, just trying to make an enriched experience in that classroom for students. Any questions on that? No? Um, co-curricular activities at the high school, we have over sixty clubs, we have over thirty-one varsity and sub-varcity sports. Um, we, we really pride ourselves in having a multiple offerings outside of the, the daily classroom experience for students to engage with their peers, learn essential skills, and uh, you know, shine and really show their uh, their, the talents. Our music program, we have about, we have five major music programs in our band, as well as three major music programs with our, our vocals, through our, our C H S choir, to our, our small ensembles. But again, it gives a, an opportunity for a student with an interest in a, a certain genre, or a specialization in a certain type of instrument, an opportunity to shine and compete. We compete in the uh, all-state music tournament every year. We uh, host many of the tournaments at Concord High School, and we take great pride in that, in our students having that exposure to those sort of events. And in addition, our drama club has been a, a really gem within our building. Uh, last couple of years, we've uh, done well at our um, state, all-state tournament. Last year, we came in second, um, I think it was to Pinkerton. And then this, this uh, last spring, we did a musical, Mama Mia, which allowed us to display uh, instrumental talents of our students, vocal range talent of our students, the stage set, design lights, and all that electronic technical stuff behind the scene for our students, and their acting talents, so. Um, and I share this with you, because Deerfield students are well represented across these groups. There is some student data, um, something that we look at, again, every year, we track our enrollment data. Um, you see the enrollment data at the end of the last year compared to uh, December of two thousand twenty-four, this past month. And something else we also do with our graduates, um, their way out is an exit interview, uh, where we try and track the data on what are they doing post-high school. And out of the total of thirty-six, uh, through the various pathways of students who graduated or completed diploma last year at Concord High School, thirty-two of them went through the interview process. And we have uh, ultimately fifteen of the graduates are going to four-year institutions, twelve of them are staying local with two-to-three-year institutions. We got a graduate going into the workforce, three unsure, and one into the armed forces. So, that data helps us really track areas that maybe we're, maybe we're not emphasizing the opportunity enough for students. We dig into, why is a student unsure, what is the, you know, are you planning, even if you haven't committed yet, are you planning to do some postgraduate education, are you looking to get into the workforce, what can we help you with? Something that is brand-new this year to Concord High School is our Postgraduate Planning Center. Um, it's not a great name, but that's what I've been calling it. So, we emphasize our, our sixteen clusters of pathways. We have a board dedicated to job opportunities in the community that, for part-time work, as well as postgraduate, trying to get your career started-type work. Uh, we host a, a job slash career fair. Uh, last year, we had fifty-four local um, companies, organizations, nonprofit, medical, construction, um, state, local government, um, post up with job opportunities for our students that they can walk out of that fair with an application, apply, and, and really dig into something they might be interested in. Uh, so we try and emphasize that there's a bigger picture than just attending our classes and then for the students.
I noticed that you've got unaccounted for, you didn't have any unaccounted for this year, but the numbers have been kind of high in the past. Did you change the way you try to get that information?
Um, we, we, um, we've, we do, we try and do it in a, a face-to-face interview. We don't get them all, all students that way, but what we have done is, in some of our last uh, senior celebrations, when they're getting caps and gowns and stuff, we do take advantage of that opportunity, have some electronic devices set up, so we can get that information like a Google form, and be able to, to, you know, take that information.
I have to say, because it's very helpful for us to see that, because like, in, what, two thousand twenty-one, I mean, I might. But there were sixteen that we believe that weren't accounted, so.
Yeah, so. Um, the graduation data, I may have already covered this. Um, I, the number of students who graduated last year with a traditional diploma. Um, and this gives a range of how many credits they completed. Um, so, uh, last year's graduates would have been required to have twenty credits to graduate Concord High School. Um, as you can see, vast majority of Deerfielders take advantage of the opportunities of the variety of elective courses we have, and are exceeded the minimum requirements. Any questions so far? I'm gonna jump over to the assessment. So S A T scores is not one of our finer moments. Um, we are a diverse school, we own our scores. We, you know, we've had people say to me, Tim, could you pull out, if you pulled out this demographic of students, what would the scores look like? And, and I usually respond with, that doesn't matter to me, what matters to me, this is the picture of Concord High School, this is our reality. So, we have opportunities for support for students around academic. Um, from our A P courses, we have tutoring opportunities for students, we have peer-led tutorines, we have staff who will assist students with A P level courses. We have students, if they fall below a two-point. We have students, if they fall below a two-point-five in a course, we have a a committee that w- looks at that, takes note of that, coordinates with the student coming down to our academic support center during their study hall to help them rectify that grade. Some engage with us, some do not, it's not for everybody. We've had a tremendous amount of success in the last couple of years, helping students be uh obtain those grades without having to go through mediation or an abridged summer school experience. We've greatly reduced the numbers of participants in those through both our our proactiveness around the academic support center, but we also added in every five-day week, we have what we call a what I need Friday. And for forty-five minutes, students have an opportunity to sign up for re-teaching, uh reassessment or enrichment opportunity with a variety of offerings uh provided by our teachers at the school. So um we've made some great gains there. I bring this up and I tie it into the assessment scores because we, there's no secret to where we lie, we we understand our scores pretty handedly. Uh, we built in supports for all students, from our students who are uh substantially below proficient to our middle seventy percent who are just need to get over that hump and they're going to be performing to twelve-hundreds and above, to our high-range students who are performing in a fourteen-hundred, but could they attain a sixteen-hundred with a little bit of support? So we've really focused on providing that sort of universal academic support for all students. Um, we've implemented this past year having the P S A T uh for all, actually, last year was the first year for all ninth through eleventh graders. And so ninth graders will take in ninth grade, the tenth grade and eleventh grade year for us to one, help them be exposed to taking an assessment of that nature. But two, um, dig into the content of the common core where maybe you're not spending enough time. On uh, we took a look at our grades and revamped our math program this past year. Our scope and sequence, you can come to Concord High School, take Algebra One and move into Algebra Two, where in the past you were required to take geometry prior to that. You will be evaluated on Algebra Two on the S A T and many of our students were about, I'd say sixty percent through the Algebra Two content and taking an assessment that evaluated the mastery of it. So right there, we we, you know, expect some some outcomes of that, that should show that the change in scope and sequence has been supportive, but we've also dug into instructional strategies, how to meet diverse learners' needs in the our classroom, because they're heterogeneously grouped, um, as well as identifying a new curriculum that better aligns with the common core state standards, which we are evaluating on at times. So um, those are some proactive steps we've taken, both in math and E L A. Um, our A P course enrollment, Deerfield's well well represented across our A P uh classes. Um, forty-six students uh combined for uh sixty-two uh it forty-six Deerfield students last year uh took an A P exam. Uh, a total of sixty-two A P exams are registered to Deerfield students, so some students took multiple exams last year. Um, they, what we do have is about the twenty students finishing in that three to uh four range with the A P scores of the forty-six, so almost fifty percent of our students are are finishing in the highest range for the A P scores.
Is there a cost for A P programs that cover?
Um, there's a, we defer costs for taking the exam or anything of that nature, we cover that. If you wanna take advantage of some of the dual enrollment opportunities uh that we have at Southern New Hampshire and H T I, there is a fee to that, however, if a if a student uh qualifies for free and reduced lunch, we have a scholarship fund, we call it. Um, we know, we, I personally don't know who the students are, but we do have a counselor who does uh manage that piece with our food services. And if they sign up, it's covered ahead of time, so it's not something that they have to go through any experience or their family has to go through an experience to ask for.
Got it, that's great, thank you.
Um, any questions on A P S A T, P S A T data? Our C R C R T C enrollment numbers. Um, it's key to to emphasize that when you look at C R T C, you see twenty-four students when we have a hundred and forty-six uh Deerfield students. Well, reality is, um, C R T C is primarily available to seniors and juniors. So you can, you have to ex- for the most part exclude the opportunity for freshmen and sophomores. What we do do at Concord High School through our elective programs, as well as our extended learning opportunities, um, some call it uh C H S, uh uh C R T C light or uh just C H S pathways. We still emphasize an opportunity for students to explore careers or um workforce that they may be interested in through our extended learning opportunities or through some of our our unique, uh I I think they're unique uh offerings. We have like a sports statistical management, um that's a math class. We have a uh sports marketing and management business class, we have accounting business classes. We have um state and local law classes offered through our social studies uh programs that spend a lot of time with federal, actually do a lot at the federal courts, which is ironic because of the name of the course. But uh they also spend time with Merrimack County's uh um leadership, as well as our local Concord City leadership and get the full gamut of what, you know, you wouldn't get through the uh C R T C criminal justice. They have liquor commission, the federal agents to um, yeah, uh, which we would see of the law enforcement agency we recently had come in. Um, it was a random one, I can't remember it, but just they have a lot of exposure to these opportunities and these careers that exist in our our community, even if they don't get into a C R T C program, their ninth, tenth grade year, those electives are available nine through ten, nine through twelve, excuse me, so i- i- we still provide that opportunity. Any questions around the C R T C offerings? Um, i- if you uh, the last page, a slight emphasis on this is our our, I mentioned our math scores were where where we stand with math in the E L A as far as uh assessment data. Um, and this is just the the deep dives we do into how successful our students being in our programs, what are the areas we're not meeting our 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 desired marks at and how do we uh, you know, adjust for that? And things that I shared earlier with the supports for students who are struggling with the change in our scope and sequence and with the additions of new programs that better align with the tools we're being used, uh are being evaluated by are some of the steps we've taken. But in addition, that quality uh instructional support for teachers through the universal design for learning, those P L Cs, professional learning communities, uh really have make a big difference in the classroom, reducing students and helping them take ownership of their academics. Any questions on math performance? The next couple of pages um starts looking at some of our specialized population, um how many per uh, you know, it looks at the full size of a Deerfield student for our ninth grade, Deerfield student body is at class of thirty-three. It it just reflects that eight of those students make up are make are identified receiving specialized services. So this is in there, um, a a part of our program of studies that I I think would be great for you to review. And we have an area called uh supports and academic supports. It reviews both our universal supports that any student at Concord High School has access to, but it also reviews all of our special ed levels of programming, from a a prep-assisted study all the way to uh programs with advanced transitional plans for students right up through the age of twenty-two until they age out into their community. Um, so a specialized is uh, you know, another area that we excel in in Concord High School. Our world language programs are robust and well, again, well represented by Deerfield students. Um, we have this French, Spanish, German and Latin. Uh, you have the numbers across the uh those different courses. Um, and it's it's something that, again, we're proud of, we have that offering for our students and they can be exposed to it. Latin tends to line up more with our students' interest in the medical or STEM fields. And uh, German is a phenomenon that I think is driven by the the instructors, people just like their instructors. I I don't have an answer why our German numbers do so well at Concord High School. Um, that's really it in a nutshell. Alright, do you have questions?
Um, when you were talking about the the Deerfield students in special ed, when you're talking class size, that's the size of the class that they might be in, I'm sure.
Uh, so your ninth grade class, you had thirty-three students who came to Concord High School, nine of them or eight of them were identified
Oh, okay.
uh as had needing special ed services.
Okay, thanks, I I didn't.
So that's not, no, no, our 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 classroom size on average, uh an average preface is the study is about ten to eleven students. Um, and uh classes were were providing some of the most intensive services. You're looking at six, maybe six students with supports of uh behavior specialists, uh uh ed assistance, physical therapists, O T services, all that's built within the program of student and experience they get through the programs. Any other questions for me?
Um, I'm thinking like our world languages, our kids don't go further just because they don't have world language now and here. Um, at the start on year one.
They study, would you, yeah, y- y- if you, that's a reality, if you you attend Runlet Middle School, most of those students come into year fi- a year two um because they've had two years of Spanish or two years of French or two years of Latin or German.
Yeah, we used to have that, but.
But it's it's, eh, but we still have that year one experience for them. I mean, as colleges are looking, four-year institutions looking for two-years experience in oral language. Um, if you have four years of a single language, that's, you know, that's great. Um, not every middle school in the state has the opportunity to offer what we offer in Concord, so. Any other questions?
Yeah.
If anything comes up, Patty knows how to find me. I'll be more than happy to send, you know, an answer or question. And again, earlier I mentioned there's several things we'll be looking at at them later, see how changes we made has have i- if they had the desired impact. Uh, we'll get that information to you as well and we'll keep you apprised of our decennial visit. It's December of two thousand twenty-five, N E S comes to look at the high school and review our school improvement plan and essentially see that we're making progress in areas that we said we would. Alright?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Good thing.
No problem. Uh, no problem.
Your information, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, possible transfer route.
Skron is here.
Thank you, Skron.
Bye, Tim.
You don't even have to call him.
Nope, she's not a text from home on the screen. Do you want, you can come up.
Oh, yeah.
So I included, um, have included some information going back and forth with Kelly, um, and Amy, trying to sort of figure out if we have one bus to each and what, I think the concern is what if some of the upperclassmen do want to stay on the bus? And then do we start running out of room and how are we gonna plan for that? So I don't know how you wanna approach the conversation, if you wanna start with your numbers or?
So I can, um, so I sent an email, I get like Patty said, um, to her and to Kelly based on looking at the numbers that Kelly had sent to Kelly, I mean, that Patty had sent to Kelly with broken out between freshman, sophomore, junior and senior. We know these families in town, not everybody can afford a car, insurance is expensive, um. So with that being said, we started looking at, um, if I have my sheet here. So there are currently twenty-seven freshmen attending uh C B N A, eight sophomores, ten juniors, and there'll be thirty-four incoming freshmen. Um, that would make seventy-nine students if freshmen, sophomores and juniors rode. The bus should hold fifty-one adults, we consider high school students to be adult sizes because they come, someone come with backpacks, two backpacks for sports and stuff like that. Seat number twenty-sixth is the smaller seat, we would put one um student there and then two in the other seats. Um, so if you start having seventy-nine kids wanting to ride where you only would allow fifty-one passenger buses, only seventy-seven, so you're still over two students if you did put three with seat, three adults in a seat, is not super comfortable. And it becomes a management control issue as a driver standpoint of like, how do you, if you have an uproar in the bus, you have no space to move anybody. Or if a student gets in trouble, the school decides they want them in the front seat for two weeks, then you have to shuffle everybody around and save that seat and sometimes a student won't ride and they wouldn't ride. Um, one thing I had thought of that I had mentioned to Patty was going back to like a bus pass situation. Um, it's easier for me being up in Concord now, I know these kids, so, you know, sometimes Dawn's like, what's that? You know, I'm like, oh, they're Deerfield kids. So it's, it comes that point that like, if I wasn't driving a high school bus, it's like, and somebody else was driving, like, would you, this dark person would know these kids? Um, we've had several Concord kids try to get on with the Deerfield kids and we have to stop them and say, it's not, you know, like, we called the office, no, it's a liability issue, it's like, it's bigger than just calling the office. Um, so there's that safety piece of it as well, if the bus was ever in an accident, obviously a Concord student would be covered with, under the insurance like a Deerfield student would, so it's a liability there. Um, I had mentioned to Patty too, that you possibly could charge for a bus pass and put that revenue towards the bus contract. That would be totally up to you guys to do. Um, looking at the Concord numbers, um, again, there would be, there's currently um twenty-five freshmen attending, forty-three sophomores and five juniors, and there's gonna be twenty-three incoming freshmen next year. That's putting it roughly at seventy-four, seventy-five students for Concord High next year, again, over the fifty-one passenger capacity. Um.
Right now, the ridership numbers, you're okay.
So.
I think the concern is what if these kids
Right.
decide that they.
Because they have two buses, because Dawn and I split the town.
Yeah.
So there are two buses and so we are, there, my heaviest morning is like thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four students. Um, I have a bigger chunk of the town based on where everybody's living and who's riding the bus. He's get the lighter side of town years ago, Concord One used to be the heavy side, Concord Two was the lighter side. So it kind of like with the elementary buses, like it flip-flops based on, you know, who's riding the buses and where they're living in town.
So I think the concern was um on behalf of Dale was to have a solution in case the problem presents itself so that we're not all of a sudden in the morning in the freezing cold, having more kids standing there, more kids on the bus than we have seats for. Um, so we were, you know, I think what you need to decide is if you're gonna give like a signup system and are you gonna give preferential, you know, freshmen and sophomores are guaranteed, and then if there are more seats for um juniors, they could get
Right.
a bus pass as well, um.
And it's a special ed students too.
Yeah, and it's a commitment.
Right.
Students have to commit to ride the bus, because right now it's kind of varies and the bus can be almost empty and then, yeah, right.
You know, because there are mornings I only have nineteen kids and then, you know, it's colder, parents aren't driving in. My number's been back up to like around thirty students. So it varies.
Has anything been sent to families, like asking them kind of, is your child going to be?
Not yet. No.
Is that information?
We, well, we want, that's why Amy wanted to talk to you so that we could figure this out well in advance, so that
Right.
you know, we need to tell families like what your intentions are. If you, if you want kids to sign up and then, you know, for for them to say freshmen and sophomores have preference.
Right.
And then see how many sign up or you, we have to have a way for them to make sure that.
Well, if we were to do that, I mean, I I would want, I don't know how we can do it, but I wouldn't want, I want kids that have free and reduced lunch if the juniors or seniors also have access to the bus, I wouldn't wanna like eliminate them. Because there might be families out there that don't have the money and the kids take the bus all four years, I don't want them to be eliminated just because they're a junior or senior. I don't know how we can do that, I'm just saying.
Right, I mean, it's it's confidential, none of us would know that.
I know it's confidential, so how could, is there a way we could figure that out?
Um, only like a guy, uh maybe one, I think you're out of one person in the school know that information. So it's probably either the nurse or guidance counselor at Concord, um.
So if they look at the list.
Yeah, we, yeah, I mean, you can, you can s- you can ask families if they wanna ride the bus and see how many people respond
Well, that's, that's what I was.
and start there.
Well, that's what I was wondering if would be the first step and put a timeframe on it that we need it done pretty quickly, but because you may find out that, you know, a a lot of these kids
Right.
are not going to, and can explain in the letter why we're asking, because we're gonna provide a bus to Cobrown next year.
Yeah, we're only gonna have one bus to Concord.
So now we're looking at numbers and are concerned, you know, like what if everywhere?
Right. Right.
Because you might, that might take care of our issue right away, like, you know, a lot of these students may say, oh, I'm not coming, no. Or they have a sibling, they have their license and they have a freshman or sophomore sibling.
Yeah, sometimes you don't always have freshmen come because they.
They're taking.
Yeah, sometimes you don't always have freshmen come as they might ever.
Right, another concern too is like, we've already had it one day at Concord is that, um, there was a weather day in the sports, soccer got canceled in the fall, so we had an influx of students
Yeah.
riding home because parents had, obviously, we're gonna meet them at the game and then that changed, so they didn't have a ride home other than the bus. So that's something to consider as well because
Yeah.
that could happen, it does happen.
Right. I wonder if the first thing we need is kind of just to
To gather information.
To gather.
I like the idea of the bus pass too, not necessarily for much money and at all money, but if somebody has to get a pass and they kind of know, oh, I've been approved to ride the bus and then you don't get all these people who normally don't take the bus who jump on the bus.
And that's right. Uh huh.
Because, no, I'm sorry, you don't have a bus pass.
Right, or you don't live in Deerfield.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have personally gotten emails being like, my daughter can't bring her friends home on the bus, and I was like, yeah.
It's true.
It's true.
Yeah, I was to tell you, like, but I don't know that everyone understands that they can't just like apologize.
Right, yeah.
And parents, I mean, and if you have a sport event that gets canceled and the kid doesn't have a bus pass, parent has to come up with a way to get the student.
Right, right.
We used to do. I know, we used to have lawn bus and you paid for it.
Many, many miles, brought many Deerfield kids home and went all over the town, dropping them off at your house. Yes, lots of times venting that. Um, but I think Nancy's right, the first thing though is get the information, find out if it's something we need to worry about and then maybe think about some sort of a sign of bus pass and then we find out, are they serious about doing it?
So how does Lisa still work with you guys? Like, who would get, who would survey the?
So Kelly would have to get hold of Lisa and then I think it's Christie at CBNA.
Yeah. And we can do the eighth graders here, ask them to sign up for the bus.
Or who would need it, just, you know, just a simple little form of like,
Yeah.
do you think you'll need the bus?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have have to have a commitment like we did
Yeah.
to where they're gonna go to school. Like, if you want a bus, we're gonna do bus bus passes.
Yeah.
Explain that we're gonna, one bus for each school, so you're gonna need a pass and you need to sign up for it.
Yeah.
And you need to know by whatever date and then we'll have the information and see if we have a problem.
And then parents can get more serious too about providing transportation if they need to and just be like, oh, well, you know, you just take the bus today.
Thank you, Patty. Please do. Yeah, I mean, I think it would probably be helpful, I don't know what the survey will do, but they're going to be riding five days a week to Cobrown. I don't know if it came down, I think if we would give preference to full time pedestrians or versus the impatience.
Yeah, you want, yeah, you wanna avoid people just saying, well, I want a pass just in case I wanna get on the bus.
Right, right. But then if we have too many, then we're gonna have to say, right, we had, the survey gave us the information and then we have too many
Right, so now we know we have to do.
Right.
to do the one bus and so.
Yeah. I just don't wanna hurt kids who don't have money and not get the bus.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's my.
I think that's something.
That's my.
It's a very, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I also feel for the upperclassmen at Concord who didn't have a choice of where they went to high school. So, you know, we sent them to Concord and there was always a bus sitting, so it's gonna be like, oh, you're a senior now, we are just on a bus.
Just cuz you're a senior doesn't mean you don't need bus.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Do you think it's participating in this selection process without you're being part of this selection process, so.
I think there's roughly, I would say anywhere from eight to twelve of those juniors and seniors that ride the bus. So when do you wanna have this information by? What do you think is a good cutoff date to round up this information so we can meet again?
I agree, sooner rather than later, I do, I am concerned that families will be like, that's so far, we're not thinking about that yet. Um, you have to kind of let them know that it is, we do need to work on. Yeah, like, yeah, it's usually not until the summer, so they might not be expecting it. Too bad.
Well, this is probably the, just the first gathering of information and then if the numbers are too big, then we have to go back and be more specific.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's bad that it's early.
Yeah, and I, you know, we could certainly put out something on Facebook saying that there will be two buses, but in order to do this,
Right.
we need people to respond to it.
We need to know for sure.
Make sure we can actually do it.
And we could shoot to get the survey out by next Google form, whatever it is, by next Friday, the thirty first, and then maybe have it do two weeks after that, on the fourteenth, the very fourteenth.
Okay.
Have you done what I say, fill out your bus?
We fill it out before your bus.
We love you, get us your form.
We fill it out before, it has to be timed without.
Well, I mean, a pro- a problem's gonna be the people that don't respond.
Correct.
We always have a high percentage of people don't respond.
They look pretty good though, if they know, like, with the high school choices, it's, I mean, we, Heather had to call a few, like, hey, we need to know, but for the most part, people were like, yes, they see the importance of
And then? Yeah, okay. Yes, yes.
Okay.
This, yeah, yeah.
You know, they go.
So if we have it on the fourteenth, then we'll know for maybe on the nineteenth or the nineteenth.
That's great, you can look at the numbers.
Alright, I'll work with Kelly and we'll, I'll have her contact.
So I'll buy search one, do by two fourteen.
Yeah.
And talked about.
On Tuesday.
Are you up for another super sample survey, Principal Witty?
You love them.
No? I would do anything for Amy Cron.
I don't have my waiters today, I'm sorry. Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Okay, nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for tuning in and helping us out when you're coming here.
Yeah, anytime, anytime, yeah, that was great.
Okay, twenty five, twenty six school calendar.
Yes, um, so.
I I think I put this one up in the packet with your old one.
Yeah, I made it a copy of the new one.
Yeah.
I'll talk about, I'll talk about it.
Okay.
Um, so we start off with the Concord calendar just because of, they start off with state, the state recommends vacations, we make sure our vacations are all aligning with the schools around us. Um, so this year, people are, um, putting in for two weeks at Christmas and people are very excited about that. Um, hasn't happened in a long time, believe the holidays fall. Um, so we did count up the right number of days, um, administration here met with, um, the DEA staff, they all sort of talked about it to see, give their input. Um, we had missed, if you, I don't know if you saw in folders, or there was an older one in the drive that got replaced, um, because September thirtieth was missing. Um, so we had to make sure that September thirtieth got put back in, um.
This one doesn't have September.
Yeah, so the older ones, um, so now, the initially the thought was, oh, did we just, um, come in on January second and do our PD day
Right, so I made the, yeah, this is, yeah.
so that we could still get out on June nineteenth, no kids, but staff come in, but then when we found an extra day, because there is a September thirtieth, um, the PD day is going to be back in January where it usually is, um, so it's January twenty sixth. And then that means school is out on, um, Friday the nineteenth and every week it's two weeks at Christmas.
And Cobrown has the same vacations as well?
Uh, they don't typically, oh, I don't know what their school vacations, but they might, vacations, but their calendar is really different, yeah, they start really,
Don't start real early or really, yeah.
They usually try to stick with the state vacations.
Okay, cuz I, cuz I know I've had friends that like, uh, here, like kids went to Northwood or had different.
Um. Yeah, one year, like, yes, one year, that, sort of that region, and I think Brian had that issue with his own kids, that there's some people on that side of the state that went below the road, I mean, it's difficult, um.
Yeah.
They start a lot earlier and end a lot earlier.
Right, I just was more, I understand the beginning and ending, I just wondered about like April and February.
February and April.
And you, um, we are a little bit, um, you, we have to be careful because there's a new state law that says if you're, um, if you're sending students to CRTC, your calendar can't be more than ten days different because then it kind of penalizes kids that, you know, you have school that CRTC doesn't, or they have school but you don't, so then they can't get there, so
So that's why they're.
um, we always start with Concord and we still have a lot of kids in Concord going to CRTC, so
Yeah.
um, we did have to make sure we do not deviate more than ten days from Concord, so.
Um, and in terms of like professional days, are these pretty consistent with what we have in the?
A set number, yeah. Yeah, we have a set number and we always have the March PD day is always SAU wide. Um, yeah, that's, um, so we always, we, I think, lost it before COVID and now this year we're going back to it, um, where Amy's pretty excited, Amy Parkinson has organized this with a group of people and it's a huge undertaking. Um, the whole SAU goes to Pepper because it's just the biggest school. Um, so all our teachers get together and they have a whole day of PD and there's all kinds of breakout sessions. Um, some people come in to do a breakout session, but a lot of it is our staff. So we identify people in different schools that are doing something that they should highlight, so they're here, so they'll get the forty five minute session and people will sign up to come. Um, and then we have one keynote where everybody in SAU, all the teachers are together, um, for about like an hour or so in the morning. Um, so where that's being put back in place, so that's why it's District One PD.
And it usually, well, it falls on voting day.
Always, yeah.
Because a lot of schools have voting in buildings.
Have voting impedibilities, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cobrown has the same week, February, the vacation that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm just. Um, their last day is June fourth, however, and they are starting on August fifteenth. It's opening day. Children are very welcome to vote with their parents, I know that was a concern in November, um.
Bring it with you.
Mm-hmm. Um, and just, I, Brian, we, um, made sure to remind us that the, um, state.
Take a deep breath.
Wow, the number of hours is nine hundred ninety, of definitely nine hundred ninety hours, we're in our calendar and we have one thousand twenty, um, hours built into our calendar. So that accounts for like some snow days.
We, yes, we are required now to put, um, five snow days into our calendar. We used to just add the days on at the end, but now we have to build them in, so we can have five snow days and it does not impact our end date.
Mm-hmm.
Which is great.
Ooh, Friday, that's good.
Hmm.
Well, that was our concern, when we didn't have that thirtieth in September, we're like, oh, gosh.
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah.
For gosh.
We're gonna have to go to Monday.
Yeah, that's awful.
Did you say that you have a hun- a thousand twenty hours, is that correct?
Actually. Yes.
Mm-hmm. But now I don't get to be the hero and give everyone.
I know.
Friday. And, and we said if we had to go back that Monday, it would be a professional development day, it wouldn't be a calendar.
Yeah, it would be a kid day, it would be a staff work day, yeah.
Okay, um. There was a delay.
Delay.
It was a two hour delay, but that's it, so.
That's fine.
Yeah.
We had Monday storm.
It's Monday.
No, cuz Monday.
Oh, I know.
Monday. It's nice not to have to start at four AM with the phone on that day, that was good, I get Monday to that. Um. So we do, do need you, the board's a more durable item. Okay. I will make a motion to approve the school district calendar as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Looks very consistent, but the current calendar, I haven't heard any complaints, so. Well, all in favor of approving the charter?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any thoughts? Okay, uh, review of school board goals, we're skipping, I apologize, I did not get Patty the cleanup copy of the board goals so she could put them in the drive. So we're skipping that till the next meeting. Space needs committee discussion, um, this was a holdover conversation from, um, who am I on here, who do I know? After the space needs presentation. I think we just need to sort of figure out if we are keeping the space needs committee and if so, what direction do we want the space needs committee to go in? Um, at this point.
The space, space, I don't know, I'm probably with the, um, the space needs committee, um, last round, for those of you who are new, uh, was a pretty big committee, uh, of course, the focus was on, uh, looking at a new building after all the work, the initial work was done and it was determined that that's what we needed. Uh, but it involved, um, two board reps, community members, administration, architects, so it was a pretty big committee. Um, so we, that would be also what we need to decide, how many volunteers do we want on the committee, what groups need to be represented as lo- you know, as well as what's the mission is if you keep that committee
Right.
in place for right now.
Well, I'm happy with the, I'm great with you still and do exploratory work and, um, I'm not sure that we need to have an architect or all the others involved at this time, but I'm still looking at different space that we have available or not in this building and the other, you know, shed building out back, um, and if the modulars, if if the modulars are, their lifespan is thirty years, is that what they was saying, thirty years? And are we at year thirty?
Uh, I think so, I don't know.
I think so.
Close to thirty.
Close, very close.
Yeah, I think it's thirty.
I'm trying to remember.
I'm trying to remember twenty five.
How long have we been in this building? Yeah, cuz maybe it's thirty six.
Well, I, I just remember.
They're in sixth grade, so that's, yeah. But I mean, I taught for thirty eight years and many of my years were over at the other schools, so, you know.
Well, I've, I mean, I've been here twenty five and they've been here, they were here before me.
Nineteen ninety.
Yeah.
Nineteen ninety.
I would say.
I think, I mean, the conversations that we've had, I think that's what we, that's sort of what we need to decide because we had the review of the building and review of the space, we had administration present how the space was being used and we had the conversation about who determines how the space is used in the building and what, you know, if there's gonna be further exploration, how to do that without having the architects come back into the picture and give us more options because we, the space is the space, so.
And I'm not done being creative.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I agree that it's fine to look at, I think there's limited that the board can do. So we can't just say, hey, Principal Witty, you need to convert this room into
No, right, but different ideas and being creative, different options, different angles.
X Y or Z. Yeah, I guess, I just not, I'm not sure if we need a full committee for that, like if.
I thought we were the committee.
Yeah, but honestly, we, we felt like every time we've tried to look into stuff, we've been shut down. I'll, I'll be honest with you, that's how Missy and I feel. We've tried to be creative, we've tried to create things.
Yeah, I feel like that, that doesn't make me say.
Um, yeah, no, no, I know.
Yeah. But like what, what do you mean?
I feel like when we've come back with certain things and talked about ideas about maybe moving this or moving that, we've been told that's not our job, that's not our, our decision to make, we shouldn't be doing that.
Well, I think, I think, I think that's a reality of the board.
Then, then, you're, you're kind of saying that we can explore other op- uh, other opportunities unless we explore an expansion to the building. I feel like that's what you're saying to us.
I do think that's sort of what the space needs committee is for.
But then you're making that decision right now, that that's what it's about.
No, I think the board needs to make that decision.
Okay.
I think the board needs to decide what the space committee is, and if it's still, if we still need it.
I feel like not everything has been looked at in the building as far as trying to make more space. I do agree that a lot of the things that we looked at, like looking at the size of the rooms, no, we can't change classrooms, you know, there's maybe one, one grade level that you can maybe go to two classrooms, but other than that, you can't. Um, and I agree with a lot of that, but I still feel that, um, I don't know, that we haven't, we haven't talked about some of the, like the, the shed. You know, we haven't actually talked about really getting somebody who knows what they're doing, who can tell us if that could be used for, for a classroom. We've just been told that it can't be.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm not saying it can't be, the board will need to decide if they want to explore that. My personal feeling on the shed is that it doesn't solve any of our problems of getting things, of getting people inside the.
Well, it can move preschool and you can move the one classroom that you've got a lot of, uh, case managers and special ed people and they can go out into the modules that is pretty much two classrooms.
I mean, I would very much disagree with putting preschool in the shed, I think unless we have multiple aides or paras in the shed who's bringing the barfing preschool in just.
Oh, no, no, well.
No, no, you, you would have, you would have to have some water supply, obviously, for it to save.
We have to have a bathroom, you have to add stuff, it costs money to do, to renovate it to use it.
Yes, absolutely.
It's not like you would just put them out there.
So I'm just saying, I just don't know that it solves any of the problems that we're trying to solve.
Hmm, wow. People, taxpayers, community members come up to me and say, well, what are you guys doing, what are you doing, what are you doing? They're looking for answers.
Sure.
And I was elected to the board to help, as in the answers, for some of the people that pay for the building.
Yeah.
And so.
I think, and I think it's fair, I think it's fair to ask the question, the board just needs to decide if that is, like, the committees can only act at the direction of the board.
Right. Right.
So the board needs to decide what the marching orders are for the committee. If it's sort of free rein to propose ideas, I mean, as any board, any board member could propose ideas and what, that doesn't even need a committee for that. Um, so I, I think we just need some direction because I don't, I don't think. Um. Just having no sort of defined goal of the committee makes that much sense.
I thought the defined goal was to.
To look for space opportunities.
Get the children out of the modulars and back into the building.
Yeah. But then we're talking about moving people into the shed.
Possibly.
So I, I guess if the goal is have children in building.
Right.
How does putting people in the shed solve that problem?
Does preschool actually belong in the school with, with K two A? Is this the best possible, best absolute spot for them inside the building?
Absolutely.
It is?
Yeah.
Because the support people that work with them are all inside the building as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I know that.
Yeah.
Because we've been talking about that before.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So is it that far to get them from the building to the shed?
Who's going, who's going to take them?
I'm talking about the support people.
I don't think it's a matter of the support people, I think it's a matter of having your littlest kids who are like three and four years old. We have access to the nurse, we have access, there's so much movement with those kids and they're here for a short amount of time.
Make them go library.
Yeah, I think, I don't. Yeah.
Everything you just.
That is not, I don't think that would be the degree level if you were looking to renovate that.
Ooh, there's different options.
Just, yeah, I'm, that's what I'm saying.
It's also, I mean, if you, if you look at all the other schools in the S U, even if they were in the shed, that's a way big advantage than what the other schools have. They're sending to a completely different building than our school. So, I'm just saying, if you compare that, I'm not saying it's, I, I don't know, I just feel like. Are there concessions we can make sometimes for some of the things we need to do because of the cost to taxpayers in this community?
Absolutely.
And I, and I don't, and I know you've said before, let's not go backwards, but we do have to think about concessions. I mean, we are living in a community where it's getting very difficult for people to pay their taxes.
But isn't.
It's getting hard. It's like our taxes went up a third of the cost, like five thousand dollars.
To me, a concession is keeping things sort of as they are right now, which works. If we are renovating the shed, which I think is not an ideal solution, that's going to incur significant cost to the taxpayer. So I guess I'm just not sure how that resolves a problem versus keeping things how they are right now. Which is sort of how it's been for twenty-five years.
Yeah, we've been keeping things the way they are for quite a while.
So I look at this, I'm looking at it as the question is like, do we need a space needs committee? And I look at that as two committees. There's one that's Ellen and Missy, kind of, you know, looking in here, and then there's the one that includes community members and architects, blah, 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 blah. Just, just in my head, that's what I'm thinking. So, do we need the one that has all the members of it? Like, are we thinking within the next couple of years, we want to propose putting an addition on? If we are thinking that, then we probably need to keep the committee. If we're saying, no, we're probably not going to do that in the next couple of years, then. I guess I look at it as have Ellen and Missy do some research. The only thing is we might need an architect or some money because if we're looking at the shed to change it into something. I mean, have them propose, because I don't think we can answer anything tonight, like, is the shed a good idea, is the shed not a good idea? And what are some of the other thoughts that are out there? Because we haven't had that discussion.
I think what we talked about earlier that, and I don't, I don't want to sound like it's a pushback, but it's, it needs to be collaborative work. I think, I don't think that Missy and Ellen's kind of going off on their own without input. So we don't know what the board would support, we don't know what the administrations. They may, they know this building inside and out, so if you come back with recommendations, spending time trying to figure things out instead of just coming to the table and all of us talking and. Brian and Kristen being able to say, well, oh, that, I never thought of that, or, oh, we tried that five years ago and this is why we didn't do it. So that everyone's having the conversation at the same time, instead of working in pockets. And I, I mean, I think that the reality is, any committee could propose things, but that doesn't mean that that's what the board would do.
Right.
So there will be, there will be pushback, there will be disagreement.
Of course not.
I mean, but we don't have.
We've been talk, we've been talking data gathering and we've been told we can't do that. Missy wanted to have what, that you don't have to hire a guy to come and just.
I would like to have a new state fire marshal committee because people that I've been talking to that are in the building trades say that's the first person we talk to. For any project like this, especially concerning the school, and I was told, no.
Right, because we do, the board hasn't decided that that's the direction.
But if you're going to put it here.
This is just information.
It's just information, it's just gathering information and that we thought that that's what our job was.
It's asking questions. It doesn't cost it.
When we took down this space and every time we try to gather information, like. We kind of tell no, or it's, it's hard to get the information, it's hard to believe. At least that's how I feel, I feel like there's been a ton of pushback with everything.
I ju, I think there just hasn't been a clear vision, like.
Well, I guess we thought it was a clear vision of just to gather information and come up with some possible.
But I would say inviting people onto school premises to do inspections is not just data gathering.
That's why I asked the superintendent, I asked her if it was okay.
Right. She also can't give okay's to everything without the board. I think, I don't know who, I mean, this is not my area of specialty, so maybe I'm wrong, but I don't know how. That person could come and tell us anything other than this building isn't fit to occupy kids right now and to make it. Habitable for a school, it takes a lot of people.
Obviously.
Want the approval process, I wasn't sure what the, what the purpose of him.
But that's the first step.
And that's actually good information because that's, we get a lot of people in the community saying, hey, turn that into that, turn. And if we at least had an expert who said, no, you can't do that, then that's good information, we don't have an expert that says that.
That's the first step.
I mean, I don't, I don't think someone's going to come in and say, you can't, absolutely can't do that.
Why?
I think someone will say, it'll require a lot of work.
And that's, and that's fine, that's still in it.
We're just continually saying, well, we could do it, we could do it, but then, then we have to get the architect involved, then we have to get community members involved, then we have to get all these people involved. To decide if we want to do this and also where to put all the stuff that's currently in the shed, are we building another shed? I don't really want to live through Shedgate two point O, but like the reality is there's stuff in the shed that the school still needs. So, I mean, I think the board just needs to decide what it wants to do. I mean, and so I guess the question right now is, do, does the board want to explore the shed as a potential learning environment?
I think it's bigger than that, I think it's just a whole. I think they're a lot that's taken out the shed.
Well, no, but, but the issue is that no committee gets sort of carte blanche to do whatever they want. The committee has to act at the direction of the board.
Yes.
So if the board is saying, yes, let's review the shed, then we can review the shed. But, you know, set, coming back to another meeting saying, we actually think we should build. Uh, a bunch of tiki huts in the parking lot instead, like, that's not what the board had directed us to do. If that makes sense.
I think it's important to remember, moving preschool out opens up one classroom. You have three classrooms to get in the building, you have an anomaly class that could potentially go down to two, but they're an anomaly that doesn't, that wouldn't stay. That it would, i- it's, i- if you're clearing out one classroom to get somebody in, get somebody out, it, there is. You just have to remember there's a, a bigger picture to all of this than just clearing out one classroom to.
Obviously, it's a bigger picture that because you have that flow of different kinds of children coming in. I understand that very well.
So. So again, in, in my thinking, I mean. I haven't thought of every space and what it could maybe or not, yeah, put or could not. Like, I can't think of other spaces off the top of my head that we could turn into a classroom, like something was said about, well, put administration. Out in the modulars and that would, but the administration space isn't classroom space, like that wouldn't, that would, but I mean, that was something I heard. But it's like, that's not going to help because, you know, you're going to have little separate, you know, one class has, okay, I will be, you know, I mean, that kind of thing. But, you know, so I'm thinking off the top of my head, can I think of other spaces that could possibly be turned into something and. No, you know, not a, but, so does it do us any harm to let, I'll say Ellen and Missy because they're technically that committee right now. To just share ideas with us that they might come up with because they're going to have the time or take the time to do it. Where I'm, you know, and I mean, knowing that, yeah, they could do that and, you know. The other, you know, we could all, the rest of it could say, no way, you know, so then they're still coming back to us. We're giving them the direction to look for what, to see if there's areas in the building that. Could possibly be changed to something else. I mean, I personally, off the top of my head, don't believe there is. I can think of one possible classroom that could maybe. But I, I don't know because I haven't taken the time to look. Is it worth having someone take the time to look?
I mean, I would, I mean, I, I hate to throw this out there because I know I'm going to be the bad boy, but. Should we have the conversation about going to one art teacher and one music teacher since we have such a space requirement problem in the school? I know that people don't want to hear that, but what would be the consequences if we were to do that? That, I'd love to hear that discussion.
I mean, I don't think we're prepared to have that discussion tonight.
Of course not. I definitely agree, not tonight, but.
Um. So I guess.
Something that's come up a lot and it's, I think, worthy of a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we've had the.
What would that mean? We've said a little bit, well, that means maybe we can't have chorus and we can't have band. Um, I understand that some of those used to be after school clubs before we went to two teachers. Is that a possibility to go back to that? I'm just throwing it out, these are some of the things that Missy and I have talked about, but I do feel that a lot of times when we bring some of this stuff up and you keep saying, oh, that's not the direction of the board to be looking at that. We can't, I feel like you've already made up your mind that we can't do anything other than an addition.
Well, I just don't think that the board has agreed to a particular direction.
Well, the direction is to look at the problem with space and what are possibilities that we can do to get more space, that's our direction.
Well, I think, you know, the original space needs committee, I think, was designed to come up with what are the space needs? And what are the needs of the teachers, what are the needs of the school?
And that's already been done, Kendra.
Right, that, that's my point.
That's already been done.
Right, we're not that committee. Right, so I'm just.
But that's already been done, all that information is there.
Correct.
We, and what came out was, we don't like having everybody in the modulars, we want them to come in, right? That was one of the things that was talked about, one of the reasons why they looked in addition.
Yeah.
Probably that's the main thing, that we don't have enough classrooms to meet all the, to have all our kids in our school. So I thought that the idea when we first had our space committee and we had our first discussion was that we were going to look at possible things that could maybe think about. Aside from an addition, because we know how the town took the addition. And quite frankly, the atmosphere is worse right now than it was when it was first, um, proposed.
Way worse.
There's no way we're going to get an addition in the school right now.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Now, down the next couple of years.
But then I just keep coming back to, do we need a space needs committee? Like, any single board member can make proposals or bring up ideas at any point. If the point of the space needs committee is to identify the space needs, we already have identified all the space needs.
No, then I guess you don't need us as a committee.
And see, that's where.
I find that I'm in really good.
So, and that's where I still think of two different space needs committees in my head, that was the one that explored. The addition and all that, that's, didn't happen and it most likely, like Ellen said, that's not going to fly in the town.
No, I don't.
Grow up.
So, I mean, Kendra, nobody gave me permission to sit there and take every single kid, how many kid, and what was the size square footage of each classroom and how many kids would fit into it and look at what was going on? And compare it with other schools, but I did it. And I went back and looked at what, since the school opened and the data and how many staff have been there, nobody gave me that. From, I didn't have school board permission to do it, but I was gathering information so we could make recommendations and we could look at what the situation is. I feel like you're saying everything we want to do, we have to have school board permission.
I'm hearing you say direction, I don't, I'm hearing you say the direct, I keep hearing, that's what I'm hearing is her saying, is the chairman saying, what's the direction?
Right.
You're, you're hearing permission, I'm hearing direction, ju, I'm just throwing that perspective out there.
Okay.
I'm hearing permission.
I mean, I, I think the board needs to decide the direction, and I'm going to say it for the fourth time. I think we decide if we want. I don't think there is an appetite to move forward with an addition at this point. Do we still want investigation and proposals of space? Knowing that. A lot of these have been explored by, potentially not at the board level, but by administration, lots of different things have been tried throughout the years. Um. And if, if the board wants to do that, then the board can do that. But I think we, we can't just say, go forth and let us know what you think. Like, is, is the idea, like, is the direction of the space needs committee, what is the goal? Are we, are we trying to get all kids inside the building? If so, then yes, you could propose getting rid of art and music. So that we can achieve the goal of getting everyone inside the building. But if it is get everyone inside in the building, let's put people in the shed, to me, that's not achieving the goal of getting everyone inside the building.
So then I wonder why this, the field school district board members and committees is even included on this list. We were totally here in the first place to this school here. Why was it even on the list if you don't think it's worthy and important?
I'm not saying it's not worthy or important, I'm just saying we need to figure out what direction we want to move in. Like, any committee, we could say, we don't actually need this committee anymore. Or this committee needs additional direction from the board.
I don't think we solved the problem of getting all the children in the school, I think that was the original idea.
Okay, so is the direction then getting all children under the, of?
Yeah, I thought that's what the, I thought that was the direction that we were given when we first came up with this committee.
I, I agree.
Because that's a new committee, that was the direction that we were given, how to get all the kids in the school.
I agree, but then you can understand why, when people are saying, we need the fire marshal to come look at the shed.
Right, let's stop talking about the shed then.
I mean, I'm.
If it's that bothersome, we'll talk about something else.
I'm not saying it's bothersome, I'm saying it's not the direction of the committee. If, if the goal of the committee is to accomplish X and you're saying, let's investigate Y, the board needs to decide if we want to include Y in the goal.
Do you want to include Y in the goal, which would be the shed, anybody?
I guess I'm, I'm confused. I mean, I, I guess, to me, I look at, okay, if we need a goal. Goal to me, if it, if it was from before, is, is there a way to get all students within the building?
Right.
That seems to me. What the goal is, we, what, whether we can accomplish that goal or not, we don't know and won't know until we have. Other information.
But the info, okay, the information that they were asking about tonight was, the example was the fire marshal coming to look at the shed. For student occupation.
Mm-hmm.
Which is not furthering the goal of getting children inside the building. Which is not furthering the goal of getting children inside the building. That's moving more children outside.
I think we were looking, I think we were also looking at preschool, because preschool is something that was added on and would, I guess, we were also not thinking that preschool had to be inside the building. That's why we were talking about, right?
Right.
And preschool, I mean, it's still right by the building. It's adjacent to the building.
Right, but so are the modulators.
I know, but, but preschoolers are a little bit more removed from the school than, say, a second grader or a third grader.
Right, so that's, we're getting back to the point of.
That's a little bit different. Well, I'm just bringing it up because you keep bringing up the shed. I think Missy and I are willing to just drop the shed because we're, you know, I don't know, maybe not, maybe not.
Well, I think somebody else said that it would be because of the way the preschools are scheduled for summer, here two days, summer, here three days, correct?
Half days.
Half days, yes. And so I'm not quite sure, because I'm not here, how, I'm assuming their parents drive them? They have, they don't have the school bus?
No, some people do. And what is this, if it's special needs?
Okay, yeah, okay. So, I'm not sure if the drop off and pick off, pickup times are the same as the kids in the school. Look, so that pattern of driving and drop off over there could be easily done, because it's kind of out of the way of the main traffic pattern of.
I don't know.
Not sure. I haven't, no, I haven't. That's what I mean, I'm not sure. We thought that because, or somebody said that would be a whole different, they'd be away from, it would be um, an extra problem with traffic if they were.
Drop off is different, pickup is same. The end of day, the afternoon class gets picked up at the same time.
Same time, yeah, okay.
And then there's a drop off in the middle of the day too.
Right, which to me, I don't know the timing of these things, but to me it seems problematic for recess and kids on the playground and having people driving behind the school.
I've been out there in so long, I don't know what the pattern is or anything at this point.
See, Collins, it could be before that being turned.
Oh, yeah, that's another area to turn, but, yeah. But um.
It'd be problematic if they went all the way through and use the pattern that we use now.
Right, and like, do use the whole block top area.
Yes, but I'm just saying for the drop off, if that was, I mean, if you had that, you could close it off while they did the drop off pickup and then open it up again. But not if they go all through, that's for sure. But anyway, that was getting me down the road.
Yeah, I, what I was getting at was there were several different reasons why they thought that preschool might be okay in that location. It was, they just talked about different things that might have been helpful. With other things.
So, maybe the goal is not to get all the kids in the building if we're thinking of using that or something. But.
This isn't gonna go anywhere.
No, I'm just trying to think, I get, I, I guess, I mean, I have some thoughts in my head already. I'm not, I'm not a fan of using the shed, but it has been brought up, I guess it's kind of one of those things, it has been brought up by the community, so do we need to do something to say, yes, it could be used, but it's gonna cost you this amount of money to use it? Or to come up with, there's no way in creation we can use it. You know, I mean, I guess to answer that question to the community, because it's still, in my opinion, hasn't been answered by people, because it does still come up. So we need to give them an answer. But I'm trying to think, is there a way to word a goal, and I know it's gonna be too broad, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Like, using the space at Deerfield Community School to not best educator kids, but you know, I mean, something to, the best use of the space.
As it currently exists.
Yeah.
I mean, that's fine. I'm not saying we can't explore the shed. What I'm saying is um, my understanding of the direction of the committee was to get everyone in the building.
Right, and I, and that might have been originally, and, and I get where you're coming from saying, but using the shed puts kids out of the building, so it's not the goal. I guess I didn't interpret it quite that way. I guess it's just how to best use the space that's available at DCS.
Yeah, I've always thought, I've always thought of preschool, the reason we brought it here in the school was because it would save us a lot of money. We didn't have to send our specialists out around the town, out to other preschools and do all that, and it was here. If they're outside, our specialists are still here. They just have to walk outside to the building. So it still is a way better solution than what a lot of other schools have, which is they don't even have a preschool in their school. You know, I mean, we're still.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not, I'm just looking for what problem it solves, of when we would need to hire more preschool staff.
Why would you have to hire more preschool staff?
I mean, you can't leave us, you can't send a child out.
If they get sick to the nurse and you have, they have, do they have a parent?
Not everyone does. I don't.
I think there's always one parent in there.
I mean, there is, but they, you can't send a one-on-one para to take another kid to the nurse.
Don't they also have just a school, a, a helper?
There, there's a classroom aide and there's.
So they have a classroom aide. And I mean, how often do kids go to the nurse? Do they go to the nurse that often?
Yeah, they frequently go to the nurse.
It's just, the thing is, I think we have to bend sometimes. We can't be really rigid in everything that we do. And that may not work out. Like we said, the shed might be horrible, might be terrible, might be an awful thing, it might be really expensive and we don't wanna use it. We haven't really.
Yeah, I mean, I suspect it would be cheaper to tear the shed down and build it.
Well, that's what some people have said, and, and if, and if that's what they tell us, then that's what they tell us.
Who's they? But it will cost money to get.
Well, unless we get volunteers.
It would need to be upgraded. It would cost money unless we got volunteers. There's a lot of people that are.
No, but I mean, we could maybe even get a volunteer who could look at it and give us that information, so.
Yes, there's a lot of tradesmen in this town.
Our techs, I know Linda has offered her services many times um, to look at it.
There's a lot of tradesmen in this town, yes.
It's more that I
Make an estimate.
We also need to know, we also have to have somebody that knows school code, because school is.
It gets really different, exactly.
Just a regular structure.
Doesn't hurt to try.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't want you to interpret this as me saying no. I don't get to make that decision. It's a board. We're a board. What I'm saying is, we need to decide if we wanna change the direction of the committee, and if the group does, then the group does.
I think the direction needs to um, try to get as many answers as possible.
To what question?
To, to, again, trying, I think trying to get the kids in the building, but I, I have to make the caveat that I wasn't really considering preschool part of the K three eight school. I have to admit that. I mean, if I was wrong, I was wrong, but I've always thought we brought the preschool in here because that was a, it was, we had the room at the time and it was a really great opportunity to save money and to have kids come here. They still, you know, you can still have them do things. They can still come in the building and if you want them to go to the library and have library time, they can still get to know things in the building. They don't have to be completely excluded.
I, I, I'm just gonna say this, I still am struggling to figure out how it saves money. If that's, if that's one of the goals here to.
Well, frees up a classroom. And yes, we need three classrooms, realize that, but it's one classroom.
Yes, and what about, and we also still have teachers here who don't have a classroom. Like the health teacher doesn't have a classroom, so.
There's more areas to be explored.
That's definitely, that's definitely an issue and it's, but, you know, I think you have to make concessions sometimes. Yes, the health teacher doesn't have a classroom. That's not a great, that's not a great thing. But I don't, I don't see us building an addition right now.
Yeah, I don't either.
So, are, do we, is, is our goal still to try and get as many kids in the cla, you know, in the building as we can?
I think so.
So, then, or do we just not do anything? I mean, if you want us to not do anything, because we don't wanna explore changes to, if we want the school to be exactly the way it is right now, then there's no need for space needs.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't think it solves any monetary issues. It encourages cost to an uncertain end.
Well, if we were to get rid of a modular, that would save us what, twenty thousand a year?
Every year we look at our space needs and every year Brian and I, Lisa, we storm it out and try to figure it out. I mean, getting second grade back in here was a bonus. Next year, we probably, we might have to put them back out in the modulators. And next year, our math specialists that are out there right now, will have to come back in and use, you know, we'll have to, we will reconfigure everything. We try to get very creative with our spaces. We try our best to make sure that everybody has a home. We turned the offices up here. We got new doors so that they could, we could use those legally. And I also want you to remember that putting a three and a four-year-old out just quickly on a, when it's sixteen degrees below zero, they're not just gonna walk across and inside. There comes coats and hats and mittens and clothes and, and then in the building. So those are things, I mean, it's only a short season, but it is something to think about.
Yeah, and also kids out here, would they get one left to come in the monitor as well?
No, they just have to walk in.
It's preschool there right now.
Yeah, the space, the, the shed is not as close as the monitor.
Yeah, yeah, because I'm, I'm familiar with the way, I haven't been here for so long, I don't remember.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but, and I, I also know that you made the comment before about not wanting to go backwards. And I understand that, you know, when our president had spoken about um, when she was in school, that they had, you know, cafeterias and part of the gym and that thing too as well. And I get it, it's not fun to go backwards, but again, you're trying to get the children into the cla, into the school again. You might have to do something like temporarily, temporarily until people are ready to accept an addition expansion. And what if you took the cafeteria, because you need to have art and music on the first floor, correct? For the younger grades?
In the library.
What if you put, what if you put the art room and maybe the music room in the cafeteria?
You still need a cafeteria on the first floor.
And you utilize part of the gym like they used to for part of the day for the cafeteria. It's been done before.
I think it was done before when we had one gym teacher and now we have two. I'm not sure that that can be done, but.
And our population wasn't as small. I mean, I, I remember when we first moved into the building and we did that.
I'm not sure. Trying to, we're a part of the population.
The things you need to keep in mind too, the goal, the goal was to get the kids back in the building, but not at that great of a cost. Like if it, you're gonna have to relook, you know, whatever the, whatever the options are that are presented to you, say, like, is that sacrifice worth bringing the kids back in the building, for example?
Worth it, for, for sure, absolutely. But just, I mean, population wise, I don't know if this um, this one, I'm just going by town with poor information, so it might be a little different, but when we started, we had four ten and we have four eighty-five now. Are we, are we more at five hundred something?
When we start, what do you mean, when we started, what about?
Oh, I'm just talking about the school opened.
When we moved in, the school opened.
Oh, nineteen ninety.
It was four hundred and ten students, and we've had two major additions since then.
Yeah.
And I have at two thousand and twenty-one, I think it was, or twenty-two, no, it must be twenty-two, four hundred and eighty-five.
I think we're, including preschoolers, I think we're up over five hundred.
Yeah, five hundred and one.
And Alma, we're five hundred and twenty.
What's that?
Looking at Alma today, five hundred and twenty.
Five hundred and twenty.
Including preschoolers.
So it's up a hundred and ten students with a, but an addition of one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven classrooms, two additions, and above the cafeteria, so there'll be two there, and then there's three there and two there, three on the second floor and two on the bottom floor. So that's five, six, seven. So that's addition of seven classrooms. But I think, I think some of the big thing, the big, but I've thought about this too, like the staff, you know, when you think about staff. Majority of all your um, staff are in areas that are not classrooms, right?
Correct.
So, it's really just, I think one of the big things was increasing the music and the art to two teachers that took over two classrooms. Gym, I think it's required, right, or what?
Well, the United States, for special, they, were classrooms that were converted into smaller classrooms, so a lot of them have walls that
Oh, they were?
They were frozen.
Oh, okay.
I think potentially some of them would be.
It's, you, you.
Okay.
I think so.
I don't know.
The very, right by the cafeteria.
Very first, the very first room when you walk in, the front door is right there to the right, used to be.
That used to be a classroom, right? Yeah, yeah.
That used to be a classroom, right? And that, now that whole space has been broken up into
Right.
Smaller, but it was only for spaces for special needs.
Only one class.
It was only one classroom. Correct, that, that got broken up into multiple, multiple people now are working and.
Yeah, so it was a re-in use.
Correct. Speech intelligence, case manager.
Yeah, yeah. But most of the other stuff, it's all the inside, it's all the inside stuff, you know, so those weren't classrooms anyway.
They put walls up.
The inside ones? They had classrooms on the inside?
Down below.
Yeah.
Where all the little mini offices are.
No, I know that.
That was just one room.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about when you say the second floor and you walk around, all the, all the offices that are on the inside. Those weren't classrooms. They were closets and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Or smaller classrooms.
Storage.
Which would be a lot, which would, which would, which would have a shed. And the fire marshal will not be happy. He puts chairs back under the stairs. And that's, those are, that's huge out there. We, and that's, that is a drag bringing those things in.
Yeah, well, I think, I think the shed is just the upper part, not the lower part.
So, I feel like this discussion is coming up more, not only because of trying to get the classrooms, the kids back into the school, but I think it's also tax driven.
Yeah.
Because getting rid of the two modulators is not gonna save enough money to the district to do anything, to do anything to lower taxes. So, I think we have to be upfront too, that some of this conversation is coming
Now, it's, it's like forty thousand, you know, something.
because of the increase in taxes.
Yeah, it was, I think, it's trying to stop an addition. It's, I think, trying to come up with a solution to an addition. What do you think?
No, see, I'm, I'm not sure I think that way.
So what are you thinking?
I'm just thinking it's driven because taxes have gone up so much, so people are looking for ways to make cuts, to make
Oh.
our taxes go down. So if we eliminate four teachers, or we, you know, let's, because the discussion is out there about why aren't our classes bigger? Why aren't class sizes bigger?
They can't be.
Right, and we've gone through it. But see, that's where I feel this whole thing is being driven. How do we find classrooms? More, or not even how we find classrooms, because again, the modulators, I know they're, they're not ideal. They're, they run their limit, except the classrooms that are out there, the kids that are out there, and even the teachers are like, we like it out here. We, we really don't care if we come back into the building or not.
That's true.
You know, I mean, and so, and boy, when I subbed and it was hot and I could turn that A C on, it was lovely. But I think it's a whole other picture besides just space needs and year and addition. I think the community is looking for ways to, how can we cut taxes? And so if we make bigger class sizes, then that frees up classrooms, but we gotta look at the sizes of classes. Right, I, I know, it's there, so we can't.
It's above state maximum standards, so we can't do it.
Right. Right, so, but I, I feel like that's more what's happening than the community now. And so by let's get rid of an art and let's get rid of a music, because that will get rid of staff members and, but with the idea that it's gonna give us classroom space.
I, I know what you're saying. Well, well then, but then maybe our goal isn't to bring everybody into the building and just leave things where they are.
Yes, but.
I, I hope, I think that's part of it. I think that's part of it.
Right, yeah.
What you're saying.
Yeah, that's true.
And don't forget, I was gonna say, don't forget, um, if we, the minute we pull the modulators out of here, we can't have them back without putting in bathrooms. That they were, they're grandfathered right now, so that always makes me nervous, like the minute Paul said we don't need that first set and they hold them away and then we needed them, it was like, and then subjects like on completely opposite side, so we wouldn't be able to, we can't have, we can't ever get them back without bathrooms, so that's just a consideration.
The same way.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking maybe this conversation is good and the decision is just that we just don't do anything. We live with what we have.
You have a says up in the seat. Um, yeah, like, keep the modulators here, whether there's kids in them or not, like if, um, these is people who are taking the kids, the kids out there for the one-on-ones or whatever, um, until, use them until they're gone, until they're dead.
Yeah, that was my, that was what I was thinking. Whatever you end up doing, to walk them in all the way.
I mean, they're actually in quite good shape from what I hear. I know they've been loose here, but they've been taken very good care of.
Which itself is good.
Right.
Um, but they, they won't, they won't last forever, but exactly, if you're gonna have them, you're paying for them, use them until they, you
It's trying to finish up something.
Yeah.
Because you pull them away, you can't, that's basically.
They're, yeah, exactly.
And they would have been made for multiple years ago.
I think we would have purchased them, but that was also, people did not have the appetite to purchase them.
Outright, right.
I think too, um, Nancy, that like what you're saying about people just looking for ways to cut and. I think too, um, Nancy, that, like what you're saying about people just looking for ways to cut and get, bring it down, bring the price down, the same way that they would think of doing their own household, because their taxes are going so high, like, what are we gonna get rid of? You know, cable this month, what are we gonna do, you know?
Yeah.
They're scrambling, they're afraid, they don't wanna have to move.
And. And I, I.
This isn't just about Dearville community, school community, it's the entire town, it's the entire community.
Totally.
Everybody's affected.
I totally agree with that, because my own tax bill has gone.
You know, I, I. Still have New Hampshire.
I guess that.
And piece of it. I don't know where people moving, but they're all moving out, trust me, I work at the dump, I've seen them, we're moving, we're moving, we're leaving, I'm like, where are you going?
Yeah.
Uh, until it's, well, well, it's a lot, it's, it's, I'm sure you're basically gonna have the same thing, you know, so it's, I get it, yeah.
Yeah, there's nowhere you can go with New Hampshire, it's, it's, I'm sure people double up.
But, but to. But to me, the other piece of this whole thing, as far as our tax dollars, people, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, right, you don't get, but I think a lot of people just see, school budget is X. And, and I'll put it on, I don't know how we, and I'll put it on us, how we get more information out to them to say, this chunk of our budget, we can't touch. And I, and, and this chunk of the budget, we can't touch. And this chunk of the budget, we may be content, but it's gonna get, like transportation, but it's gonna upset people because now all of a sudden there's no transportation for their high school kids. Or if we wanted to go by what the law says, we technically do not have to provide transportation to elementary school kids that live in a two mile radius outside, yeah, outside of the school. Those are not things I want, I personally wanna do, I think it's important to get kids to school as every grade model gets. So, so again, and people say, well, Nancy only wants to give money to D C S, that's not true. I just don't think D C S should be the ones that have to take the big chunk of it, if that makes sense to what I'm saying. To me, the only place that we can possibly take.
We have to control a freight rate.
Yeah, and, and, and that's where, it's not that I only wanna give money to D C S, that's, I hope I have not given that, if I could find places that we could take it out, I would, but not at the expense of the education of the kids at D C S. And why are they the ones that have to only have one P E teacher now, or only have, you know, only have art every eight days if we got rid of an art teacher or some, because of these other chunks of the budget that we can't control? And so to me, it's even going further, like, so how do we get some more of the special ed cost taken care of?
Like, how do we get control of that?
And, and that has to, and we had this, I mean, unfortunately, that's at the federal and state level.
Basically.
Right.
So.
You know, so, but anyway, we're getting on, yeah.
I think this is a very worthy discussion, and I think talking about taxes, talking about cost is very important.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not really involve the space needs.
Right, I understand, right.
To be honest, so like, we can certainly talk about art teachers, music teachers, I As, I would love to get community input on that. But saying that we're only looking at those four space needs, I think is disingenuous. If we're, if we're truly looking to cut taxes and cut our budget, that's a different discussion than just space needs or space needs.
Right.
Yeah.
But I guess I just brought that up because I wonder the fact that we still hear space in, in D C S is.
I mean, I think, I think the space is secondary.
Or bringing things in.
In my mind, this, this space issue is a sec, people, we can get rid of art and as a bonus, we get a second. But I think the primary driver of that discussion is all what is, tax related, which is fine.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And is worthy, a discussion that's worthy of having.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't know that it's really a space needs commitment.
It's kind of all interrelated.
Yeah. So back to if we, what is, do we need the space needs committee discussion? I guess for me, I, I, but.
We need a goal, and that's where I, I still would like to hear, uh, ideas that people have of what could be used.
That's really wild, I don't know if we can do it that way, you know?
I think, I think you've pretty much heard the main ideas that have come up with trying to get more space. I've already said them, so, the shed, moving that one classroom by the cafeteria, and one art and one music, which I agree, is not necessarily a good option, I'm just putting it out there, but if you were to do that, that would free up four classrooms. But we can make a decision, we don't wanna do that, and we don't wanna make changes, we wanna keep things where they are, that's okay too. And we just get by for however many years we have to get by and see if the population goes down and if the population goes up.
I mean, I think if, if the space needs committee wants to make that presentation of
We gotta deal with it again.
we can cut this and this and this, or get rid of X, Y, and Z with proposed cost. I, I think that would be funny.
To cost savings.
Cost savings.
But also if, if the shed is still part of the major.
Right, there might not be cost savings.
So that's, so right, so that's why I'm having a hard time with the shed, because there's not cost savings with the shed, so like, is the goal, cost savings is the goal?
Right. Right.
Bringing people in, that also doesn't satisfy that goal.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
How much money is in the reserve funds, for what?
In your budget binder? Two hundred and fifty, mm-hmm.
Oh, that's not, but is that, um, nevermind.
I worry about that fund because, I mean, we've had two times where pipes have leaked and exploded, and we've had a boiler that needed to be fixed, but like, we have so many things that are out of date, I worry.
You're optimistic, come on.
Alright, nothing's great.
There's some sunshine over there.
It's good. Chimney, we're talking, roof's on fire, we're talking.
It's all happening.
What stuff is fixed?
Come on. So what are you thinking, money would come out of there to?
I don't know.
Well, it's, it's interest, it's an interesting idea too though, cuz Patty said if we get rid of the modulars, they're gone out of.
Oh, exactly.
So if you bring like four classrooms in. What, the population goes up. I mean, it sounds to me like it's smarter just not to do anything right now, see, the pop, we're getting by, it's not easy, right? You guys are struggling with it every year, but if the population goes up and classes get bigger, then we have definite.
I think the tax neutral thing is keeping it as it is right now. The shed would incur costs. I think if you wanted to cut, then that's a different discussion.
Yeah, I don't wanna cut, consider that, I don't want to, I think we have a wonderful music program and a wonderful art program, and I think the kids need that. And I know, I have looked at other schools in the area that have the same population as us, and, uh, it was only like five schools, I went through whole state lists, and out of those five schools, one school also had two art and two music, and the other one had one art, one music. So, we do have something good, I don't wanna get rid of it, I also think we have great art and music teachers right now too, that are doing wonderful things with the kids, so, I, I'm not, believe me, I brought that up, I'm not bringing it up because I wanna get rid of them, I'm just bringing it up because it is something that has been talked about and is something that could be a possible solution, the, the other things, you know, I thought, well, maybe we could put art and music on the carts and they could go down to the little kids, but then, you know, you look at the music classrooms.
And that's the thing is, is, as well, people ask questions, you know, what are you doing, what can you do, what are you thinking, and they're asking questions, they want some answers.
And, and I agree.
Yeah.
And that's where I wish there was a way to get information out to people.
That's not social media.
Right, bingo, big time, big time. But like even the special ed presentation.
Yeah.
That we had and was put online for people to look at, because again, how else do you get that information out there?
I mean, that's a big percentage of that budget, if we can get people to understand those costs.
Exactly, and. And, 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 yeah, and so how do we let them know that this is something we don't have control over? You know, and so I, I just wish, because it delivered a session, you know, there'll only be probably
Forty, fifty people.
Forty, fifty people, unless, I mean, it'd be great if more came out, I'm up for them to come out.
Sure.
And, and have that, but they don't. And so, and I don't wanna say, cuz we were accused once of saying that, you know, voters aren't educated. I don't wanna say that, because I think a lot of voters do come in educated as much as they can with the information they have.
Available, correct.
So, that's fed, presentation's available, but how many will? They'll look at the voter's guide that comes out, they'll look at, does the school send something out?
Ours is in the voter guide.
Ours is, so in the voter's guide, they'll read that.
The town report.
Yeah, and that's great, but that
Doesn't, it's not a homework.
Tell them everything, so, that's the hard part of the whole thing.
No, it's homework.
But anyway, I agree. Alright, so going back to the space needs committee, I move that we don't do anything with the space needs committee right now. And we don't stand as this. What does that mean? I don't think I do anything.
Are we keeping the space needs committee?
Nah, let's get rid of it. I don't mean to be tongue in cheek, I just, I, I, I guess this discussion's been really good, I feel good cuz I said some things I wanted to say. And I, I feel like we're at a point where maybe nothing can be done or should be done at this point, without
I mean, I think.
eroding away the education of the school.
I think people can always make recommendations, so if someone wants to put on the agenda, I would like to do, I have an idea about this, can we explore it and talk about it? Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Put it on the agenda. Um.
But I mean, we were looking for a direction, the board to give us.
Right.
A direction. I'm kinda like this, you might still wanna look into the shed, I don't know, that's up to you if you want to.
I'll look into all kinds of things, but maybe that's just gonna be homework from you, I don't know.
And I'm curious about the other things you're looking into, I mean, not to say it now, but I mean, when you say, maybe that's my homework, I mean.
I'd have to do homework first, yeah.
Yeah, but I would be, I would be interested to hear those things, I think we all would be interested to hear. So I think it's like, not throwing it on you, like, I'm gonna say you gotta do it, but if that's something, if you do that, then put it on the agenda
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
and say, hey, I wanna share this with the board.
Yeah, and I mean, I think there are a lot of questions asked, and there have been a lot of questions answered. Whether people watched the particular meeting where it was answered.
Hmm, right, right.
Wh- whether people know where to find the document on the website is another question, so I think it's a little bit false to say we never answer people's questions or like have discussions, people may not have seen the discussion, which is fair, cuz as much as I'm having a great time, I understand people not wanting to sit through this. Um, so, you know, if people have questions, they should ask them, because generally we have an answer, or we can get you an answer. Um, so I, I just don't know that there is a direction that we need to head in right now. But it's not my decision, so.
You made a motion.
I made a motion, nobody seconded it, so that's okay.
I will second the motion. Discussion.
I don't think we should do away with having at least a committee in name.
Okay.
Because if all of a sudden.
My, my original motion was just that we were not gonna really.
Oh, I thought you were getting rid of it.
Do this right now. And, and she said, what do you, well, what about the committee, I said, well, okay.
I think the committee should stay intact, you might not have a job right this moment, but that could change at any given time.
And I would say that's still okay then, too, if you wanna explore, think about things and bring it to the board, that's okay, right?
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
I mean, I have to say, one of my big questions was what are the size of classrooms and how many students?
Yeah, exactly.
I did all that work, and I looked at everything historically, I looked at how many special ed people do we have, how many, you know, and I looked at how it's changed over the years, and I compared it with other schools, and I don't see much of a difference.
And like, if the committee is like, we've come up with this brilliant idea, we've solved world peace, and come back to the board, and we can talk about it. I, like, I don't think.
Solve world peace.
Right now?
Oh, boy.
I mean, I think it's equally likely, to be honest. Um, but I'm fine with keeping it open, but but there would need to be some goal and direction before there's like substantial work that is moved forward, I think.
Right, and I, I don't think even Missy is looking at this point like, all this work needs to move forward.
I'm not taking my hammer out yet.
No, no, but she's just still exploring.
You're just thinking about ideas and exploring, and then you're thinking about it, and then maybe bringing that to the board about, well, what about this, have we thought about this, right, that's where you're.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't even know that we need a motion for any of this, actually.
Okay. Alright, I take, I withdraw my motion.
You withdraw your second?
Yes.
Alright, we're good.
Okay, if something else, if there's a great idea, if you wanted to do a presentation with cost savings.
I don't even know if I wanna open up that can of worms, I mean, it's I, I originally, you know, with thoughts that, boy, we really wanna get the kids in and get rid of the modulars, I really thought that was a big goal, but if we're at a point where we're really kinda happy with the modulars, and modulars are in good shape, we're taking good care of them, and that's taking care of things, well, that gets rid of a lot of my sense of urgency. So, but we never really had that, we never really had that discussion before, I always kinda felt it was like urgent to get rid of the modulars.
Well, I think part of that, the urgency may have been from, um, people's concerns about the safety of the children coming back and forth to school to the bathroom by themselves, keys.
Yeah.
Open the door by themselves, you know.
Well, I am concerned, I am concerned it's third grade and not fifth grade, but, yeah.
Yeah. So that, that was part of the urgency with the safety.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, it is a problem, and it's.
But yeah, we would have to make substantial, I think, um, changes to the number of staff we have in order to facilitate bringing everyone in.
What do you mean?
I mean, if we wanted to bring four classrooms inside, we would have to make substantial cuts to the current curriculum.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I thought you said bring more staff in.
No, no, sorry, to bring students in.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
I may have. That's what you said, like, we'd have to increase the staff.
No, 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 so you would have to decrease staff substantially.
Yeah. Yeah.
If, if we truly were bringing everyone in the.
Right, into the building. Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Solar update. Um, trying to organize the chain of emails that we have, which is endless at this point, um, going back and forth between when we had the glitch with the USDA and the grant. Um, so we finally got confirmation, um, from Dean that he, uh, he felt that the email from the USDA, um, was okay, provided that we have the separate purchase, purchase option agreement. Um, he then said, though, I need to further investigate the L L C portion of that solution, um, so he's done that. Um, and he, their firm has concluded, he had someone else working on it with him, um, that the district can acquire an interest as a person in an L L C, and he sort of cited the reasons why we could qualify to do that. Um, so if you're comfortable knowing that Dean has explored those two options, I can email Ted tomorrow and let him know that we, are we, advice has come back, this is what it said, the board would like to move forward, cuz he said, seemed to indicate we would have, we're gonna have to modify the agreement somehow. So I could get that from him and.
Would we have a setup that L L C first?
I don't know that, I, I, those were his ideas, and he had said, yeah, I think those would work, but I don't know what that means in terms of moving, telling the USDA, like, we're moving forward and this other piece has to come in with the purchase agreement. Um, Dean also mentioned that if you're gonna end up doing the purchase agreement, which I think we already knew, that needs to go on a more arduous, cuz you have to spend money. At some point.
I mean, at some point, we decide to purchase.
Whenever we.
Right.
So we would only need the L L C for the separate purchase? Or? I don't know. Okay. I don't know if that is a, you do that first, or only if you're gonna do the purchase, I doubt that, but I'm gonna let him know that
Okay.
we do, we can be part of an L L, and, and interest in the L L C, cuz it was not, I thought at first, he said we were gonna be an L L C, but we'd be an interest, party interested in that.
But I'm gonna let him know that we do, we can be part of an LLC, and, and interest in the LLC, cause it was not, I thought at first, he said we were gonna be in the LLC, but we'd be an interest, party interested in that.
Liability corporation.
Yeah. So.
But is there a cost to establish or maintain?
I don't think.
For an LLC, you have to have, um, I know to renew it every year costs a hundred dollars.
You have, but you have to have like keyword, or.
Yeah.
It could cost a hundred dollars.
You have to remember what a management, or manager, or.
Yeah, so like.
Yeah.
Do we want to do that, I guess, is my question.
Is it a requirement to push this through?
Yes.
Yeah, but, and the question is, do we need to have the LLC before we do all this, or do we set up the LLC later about that point when we want to purchase it? I think that's one of the questions we need to know.
His, his, and his response led me to believe that. The, the district fits the definition of person because of the way it's worded in the LLC. So he says the LLC statute defines a person to mean a natural person, partnership, limited liability company, foreign blah blah blah, company, trust, business, trust, estate, association, joint venture, corporation. And, um, or any other individual entity, or it's, it's in representative capacity. So he says, a school district is a corporation and therefore meets the definition of person for the purposes of the LLC Act.
Right.
So he didn't say, well, someone has to be in the LLC, which is what we initially thought he was saying.
Right, it's the school, the school would be the.
Is that this school would be the interested party in the LLC, which I think has to be established to meet the requirement of the USDA to say, you can't just, you're getting a REIT grant through the federal government. So you can't receive that grant unless you have that, the two solutions that he posed, that Dean said, yes, you're okay.
So we would have to set up an LLC.
Yeah, that's my understanding. So I can tell Ted to send whatever he needs from us, and then hopefully get back to you by the next maybe a little few weeks, you know?
I mean, I know, I look at my businesses, and you, you have too, it's like a hundred dollars, he's not.
Yeah, you have to bring it here.
I can ask him about who would pick up that cost, if we split it or however, and he's setting it up then.
Right.
Yes.
And that's, you have, like, who, I guess the school district is going to be the.
The school district's president.
Do you want me to ask him to come?
President of the C, of the LLC?
Do you want, you know, I'd do anything for you, Missy, to the next meeting?
I'm just gonna be a sprig.
No, that is.
Ted?
Oh, God. Never mind. I don't think we need that.
Okay.
I think the question is just like, we make it scored, but who would sign it, would it be the present day person?
Right.
Who signs it?
Yeah, like, who was the agent?
She just said she'd do it.
Yeah.
Who are all these?
Christie's all set to do it, yeah, she's good.
I just, I feel like the LLC is going to be more complicated. I'm currently.
I.
Unless it's different.
I know, my experience, it was very easy.
It was very easy, so. Yeah, I'm just not sure if a corporation is setting up an LLC.
But it's the same, she said person, it's as a person, so it's the same.
Well, I agree.
From what we've done. What is counsel said? Did, did he mention anything about, he's the one who told you it has to be, I see, correct?
No, the, um, the solar people said that was their solution they came up with to get around the issue of us receiving the federal funds, yeah.
Okay. Oh. Okay.
And he keep, and then I had to seek legal advice, like, can we do this?
And, and, so you did ask that already?
I just said, yes. Yep.
Through legal, and they said, and, okay, so he would have more information on how to set that up with this, like, situation.
And yes, yes, yes. The solar person should.
No, you're the lawyer. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think we would need.
Why? I, we have to have his involvement, but I don't know what the solar person is, yeah.
He can help. Yeah.
He, right, we can't just set it up on our own, for sure, but I don't know who's taking the lead on that, he's.
Yeah. Well. Well, not for the school, but me, I can set my own LLC, because this is a whole, a different situation.
Yeah. Right. Absolutely.
I would ask, I would ask him.
Absolutely.
For you.
Yes, I'm, I'm, my only comment was, I wasn't sure who took the lead on it, whether this, their, who's setting it up.
Right, so, yeah, the solar people look, if they set it up, and they're all set, and then the legal looks at it and says, okay, yeah, that's signed.
Them or us. Yeah, yeah.
You would have to, you.
Yeah.
Okay, have to, and he would set it up.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause I mean, quite frankly, we wanna do it right, but we also don't wanna have the world too involved in this, but it's expensive.
That's every time we use them, yeah, so.
Yeah. Right, but that's not a big, he could direct you, but there could be, because of this situation, it could be different than just a, like, like, we.
Yeah, right.
Like, you're gonna start your own.
So just, I would ask him, and if, if it's simple enough for. We're gonna do.
Gonna open an LLC for the school?
Yeah, no, yeah, just find out what, who would be the signer, isn't.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And quote like that, at least I'd add a piece of advice, I would think.
That sounds good.
All right. That's good. Um, informational items, my only item is that the filing period for school board candidates. And the treasurer and the moderator and the district clerk are open, so if anyone is interested in writing any of those positions. You have to visit each councilor's office during their normal business hours and sign.
I think thirty first, right?
By the thirty first, so it's open today until the fif, thirty first.
October twenty ninth, thirty first.
It's next Friday, I think. The day ten of ten is on Friday, thirty first, yes, okay.
And don't leave without signing the warrants.
The other, the thing I had, um, so, yes, with the superintendent search, and Nate offered to do it. He can't go to Wednesday's meeting, this next Wednesday, I can do that one, but do we need to vote to what Nate? Like, when Kendra went to a meeting for me and we realized we hadn't have her, she couldn't vote because we hadn't voted to let her vote.
No, um.
Do we have to do anything so Nate doesn't get over there, or now he can't participate?
Next, um, I think the first meeting is just to decide who's gonna be interviewed, so there won't need to be any official voting.
Okay.
So I think you're fine, is he named as your ultimate on exactly the board, do we have one?
She's actually the alternative, but Nate.
Yeah. Is doing the search.
He said he would.
I don't, only the full S A U board can hire superintendents, so that should be the only vote that needs to be taken, and that has to be done by the board.
No, so there shouldn't be any official action taken by the committee.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Is there a meeting next Wednesday?
For executive.
Exec, yeah, just exec, yeah, the executive. Okay. Yeah, not for you, okay.
So unless you wanna go.
The question, I have a question for, um, are we doing meeting minutes, are you doing meeting minutes every other week, or is it?
So it's typically the business meeting, which is the first meeting of the month.
Um, I read them, of course, my friend's still sending them, so. But, um, I, was our last meeting on televised or anything, YouTube or anything?
Hmm, I think so, yeah.
Was that the one where we didn't have a camera? No, we had the.
Oh, we have it, we had the new one last time, yeah.
So I was looking on, maybe I wasn't looking in a place I see on YouTube.
Oh, yeah, so it's been not been updated, is that what you're saying?
I don't.
Last week's meeting?
Last time, yeah, unless, unless I wasn't looking at the right place, but I looked at YouTube.
I will look into it for sure.
Um, but I didn't see any mention of, we were talking about safety issues, remember, you had a presentation on safety?
Yeah.
And I had a comment, and it didn't hit the, um, the, the next slide, so, and so I just wondered if it was even on the, I had a question.
Nice.
I, I just didn't see it, that's all.
What was the question?
I asked if anybody had ever, was curious, is if anybody had spoken about Stafford teachers being armed, because of the whole safety issue thing.
Um.
Um, the fact.
Motarily.
I, I don't.
Whatever, doesn't.
I don't know if the minutes were available for last meeting.
I haven't, I haven't seen.
Yeah, cause I, that's what I used to type the minutes up, I look at the, I, I relive this whole thing again. I watch the whole videos again, or listen, the one that didn't have.
I mean, so, and minutes are just general discussion, so if you wanna, if you wanna make sure your comment isn't made, you can.
And I don't. Yeah.
I was just curious if it was gonna show up, and that's all, I didn't have to absolutely have it, and I was just curious.
Except, sometimes I just put, a discussion was had about.
Right, right. Oh, I see, you're in the next, you're in the two five, um, September fifth, the January eighth notes in the February fifth, um, folder.
Folder.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's usually in the first business meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So that's why you, I didn't realize that they were in there, cause you have an app, yeah.
Okay.
Cool, thanks.
Okay, public comments. Now, Ted. We don't have a non-public, no, quip, resignation, okay, signatures.
From everyone.
Yeah, we need to sign.
First pages on both sets.
Please end.
You can probably enjoy.
Okay, well, I'm speaking. Filing, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm just gonna, you know.
I had a feeling, I was like, we're fucking angry for.